School Board of Education meeting for March 7, 2016. May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Marcusson?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Lane?
Here.
Mrs. Kryling?
Here.
Dr. Elliott?
Here.
Mr. Mooreman?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is my president's report. I just want to take a couple of minutes and bring us all back. I mean, we've been involved as a board with what I would call a lot of board business and policy and finance and operations and personnel issues over the last several months. And I want to bring us all back to the time. Remember when we all had newborns? And we couldn't do anything, right? Without thinking of what? That newborn. Couldn't go to the bathroom. You couldn't eat dinner. You couldn't, you definitely couldn't go out with your friends because you always had to think of, as Brittany would know, the newborn. And I know our, I want us to start thinking about what we do and thinking about the students of Lake Forest High School and how it affects the students of Lake Forest High School. Everything we do. And I know that's hard to do because I tried doing it in our little closed session and a few of the other meetings, and it's really hard to do. But I would like to remind us to at least try and do that, to the extent we can. And I'm going to lecture us all because I saw it on the, on the wall at the school. You guys see this every day. You walk into the school. But the mission of Lake Forest High School is to inspire the passion to learn, the insight to know oneself, and the courage to make a difference. I used to drop my kids off at school as they were running out, and I'd say, "Make a difference," and they would not pay attention to me. But I hope they do, and I hope that the school does that to them. And our vision is to be the leader in developing every student's capacity, not just some, every student's capacity, character and confidence to make a difference in their world. So, that's my preachy lecture for this evening, and now I wanted to make a few other comments. The board and the administration are taking an active role in monitoring state educational legislation and funding initiatives. We also continue to monitor local school financial issues, including North Chicago schools. As many of you know, the state took over North Chicago District 187 four years ago and instituted two oversight boards. In February, a group of representatives, representative state legislators, mayors, school board presidents, and John vice presidents, and school district superintendents met to discuss several things, including the recent and current work by the state-appointed executive director, oversight boards, administrators, teachers, and staff at North Chicago District 187 to stabilize the district and move the district forward financially and in student achievement. The current factors threatening the short- and long-term financial viability of North Chicago District 187 in light of anticipated loss of state's special financial allocation and a possible state decision to overturn the recent District 187 board decision to deny creating a second charter school in North Chicago. The charter school itself has 45 days to appeal, and then the state has 30 days to conduct a hearing on that. We also discussed strategies to support the short- and long-term viability of North Chicago District 187 to provide its student a quality education at its neighborhood public schools. The formation of a representative committee to investigate all factors and options regarding North Chicago District 187 and recommend a course of action if the district is no longer financially viable, which the North Chicago leaders anticipated to be in the year 2020. We also continue to be informed about Senate Bill 1, SB 1, and other school funding reform proposals. As I'm sure you're all aware, we're in our ninth month without a state budget, and without getting too political, you all know Governor Rauner spent much of his February budget address discussing education, stating, "We must make the education of our children a top priority." The one thing I won't back down on, this is Governor Rauner, "The one thing that's non-negotiable for me is increasing education funding." Rauner went on to underscore the need to reform the school funding formula, and in his address, he also stated, "Any school funding reform proposal that involves taking money from one school district and giving it to another is doomed to fail. To achieve formula changes, we must increase state support for education so that no community has state funding taken away as part of reform." As with many declarations and political comments, we have yet to see any specifics on this declaration. I'd like you all to be assured that as your elected officials, we intend to closely monitor and represent our community regarding these very important school funding issues. So, thank you, and I will now turn it over to Mr. Simic for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Marcusson. I really appreciate the comments about the board mission and vision. They're words that we do and should believe in, and the board's spent a lot of time reviewing those, and they're very meaningful, I think. So, I'd like to hand off to our two students to kick the superintendent's report off.
So unfortunately, Jill couldn't be here today. She has the stomach flu. But in her place, we have Nicolet Stern, our senior class president. So, it was a relatively quiet month of February, but we still managed to get, you know, a good amount of stuff done. So, we started off with E-Day. That's kind of where we left you last time, and it was, it was so much fun. E-Day is always great. It's a great break in the day, a great way to, you know, kind of release some stress and, you know, hang out with your friends and go to breakout sessions, dance, inflatables. At the end of E-Day, there was a, you know, it was almost like the whole commons were dancing, so that was unbelievably fun. And the breakout sessions are great. We have some awesome teachers that wanted to do some, you know, really fun stuff like cooking meats or all the way to how to get food for free. So, it was, it was really fun, and a lot of kids signed up, and it was awesome. But something that we need to work on as a student body is to encourage our peers to see the value in the day and stay versus leave. So, that's our goal for next year. Now, for Valentine's Day, we made valentines for all the staff members at LFHS, and yeah, just as a thank you for all they do, because they do a lot for us, and we really appreciate that. And it was also really fun meeting new staff members as well.
With the money we have left over and that we raised from our turnabout dance in February, we have narrowed it down to four choices of where we're going to give the money to, and we voted as a whole student council. So, we're still waiting on the results, but we will know by Thursday. And our first choice is Elementary North School in Vernon Hills, and we're looking to give them hokey stools, which are, instead of sitting in a regular chair at your desk, you're sitting at little stools that move around with your hips, so it's like working your core, and so they don't get all their jitters out while they're working, so they can focus on their work and not go crazy, because they're third graders. And then our second choice is another elementary school in Chicago, and they're looking to go on a science field trip because it's a science and math-based class, so that they would love the money for that. And our third choice is GLASSA, which is a North Shore special education sports program. And our fourth choice is cystic fibrosis, money going towards research because two of our members in student council have cystic fibrosis, so it wouldn't really touch them. And then we also saved $2,000 left over to stuff backpacks full of school supplies and other things they need for school for the North Chicago and Waukegan areas for the next school year. Then this weekend, the past weekend, we had the talent show, and it went great. It was so smooth. It's always such a pleasure to get, show our community and the rest of the school the talent that we have in the school, because no one really knows that this person can sing that way or that person played the drums. It's just coming out of nowhere, and it went great, so.
And lastly, as we're approaching the end of the school year, we're looking to, you know, kind of a last hurrah for student council, and we're looking to do a barbecue at West Moreland, something that the senior citizens would very greatly appreciate. So, dancing, cooking food, and just having a good time with all the senior citizens there. And our former student council president, Luke Gibson, I know that he did a lot of work over there, and, you know, we can tell that, you know, it'd be a really great opportunity, and it would really benefit those people. And that's all. So, if you guys have any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. So, for the balance of the superintendent's report, I have two items to discuss. The more entertaining of the two I will address first. The, if you were not able to be there, we learned that Jill Brer, one of our student council representatives, has quite a comedic streak. So, we saw that on display. So, this past weekend brought us the annual talent show. Each of our students, each year, our students amaze us with their abilities onstage and backstage. And onstage, we have the pleasure of seeing students who have developed in their time with us and have thrilled us again and again. Just as impressive are the students who are new to the scene, whom we look forward to seeing in the future. Everybody is amazing is what occurs on the screen or with the lights on onstage is what occurs between sets or apart from the artist's performance. The production quality of the talent show is something that even experienced performers marvel at each year. Each act has a different setup and an individual light show. The speed and apparent ease of switching from a set requiring a grand piano center stage to a set with a large jazz ensemble to a four-piece hairband is nothing short of astonishing. Parent sponsors, Sherry and Jim Paslino and Matt Kerewak, and staff sponsor Karen Topham deserve our and our students' appreciation and applause for their huge efforts to the arts and our students at the high school. It is, every year I go, and I think, there's no way it can be as good as it was last year. And every year, there is one kid after the next that pops out, and a bunch of them are freshmen and sophomores every year. The juniors and seniors, you've seen them, you know what is going on, and all of a sudden there's some kid that jumps out of nowhere. It is absolutely amazing. And part of the fun is to bring people who have never been to a talent show at our high school and to watch their response afterwards, because it, it is jaw-dropping. And Dr. Holland, you were there, and you were one of those people. It is shockingly great, isn't it? I have to confess, my wife laughed far too loud at a couple of the things, embarrassingly loud, especially at the teachers and some of the other comedic routines. A really good video our English teachers put on, by the way, as good as about anything that happened. Total ham bone, they did Adele's "Hello" and stood and mouthed that to the music. It was really hilarious, so really put themselves out there. On a somewhat less exciting note, the spring state testing season begins soon. Happily for students and families at Lake Forest High School, the district signed up for universal free ACT testing for all Lake Forest High School juniors. This almost certainly will be the last time Illinois students see a school or state-sponsored ACT test, as the district will take direction from the state in shifting to the SAT in coming years. Park testing will occur this year as part of the regular school day and not with late start days, as we did last year. This year's park exams will also be much shorter. We want to have a positive testing culture in our school and encourage students to participate and parents to encourage their students to do their best. Finally, Illinois students will participate in the Illinois Science Assessment, which is not connected to the ACT, the SAT, or the park. It's, it's based on the next-generation science standards, and only students in biology, advanced placement biology, or advanced biology will take this assessment. And that completes the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board? Nobody? Okay. It's now time for reports. First report I have on my agenda is the East Campus Security Report. Mr. Alvis?
Well, good evening. Shayla Holland, I just wanted to speak some about our East Campus Security Review. And so, in thinking about the national and local landscape around school safety and security, our district has taken a pretty comprehensive approach to developing a plan for the district to be up to speed with our safety and security procedures. But our conversations pretty much started at a fundamental level in terms of just asking ourselves, who's in our building? How do we know? And how can we create a space where we can ensure that everyone who walks through our doors is safe and also secure? And if something were to happen, how would we, what are our processes and procedures to ensuring that everyone is safe within the walls of the school? And so, connected with the conversations, we talked about different access points in the building. We talked about staffing. We talked about the fact that our schools open early in the morning, we're open during the day, and definitely at night. And we just start looking at the amount of traffic that we have throughout the building as well as the flow of traffic. And so, in thinking about, and we also started thinking about where our offices are located, and so, facilities. And in thinking about everything, rather than piecemealing a plan or addressing things in isolation, we really wanted to focus on a plan. And so, what we presented to, what we've presented to the board is a comprehensive plan of how we plan on addressing all of our needs. And it starts, we developed a committee, and our committee has members, district and building-level administrators, as well as our safety and security personnel, to really speak to all of the different areas that we were looking at. And so, that's what you've been presented with. Alan is going to talk some about the different components.
You may remember, we started this conversation at the November board meeting and talking about, as we were embarking on this, some of the areas that we were going to look at. And so, the report that's in your packet tonight is to memorialize the work that's been done to date. But as it says in the summary of that report, this is an ongoing issue that has to be revisited frequently. And so, we don't look at this as completing it and being done with it and putting it away, but we have some specific recommendations that we'll be making. Not going to touch on everything. It's not my intent to go through all the components of the report. I'm just going to hit on some of the areas and a couple of the, some of the maybe more visible bullet points as we go through. Up on the screen, you see the individuals who were involved in this, so there's a lot of knowledge about the building operation. And then between Scott Craniac and Ben Grum, who is our current Student Resource Officer, they, they were able to bring in the law enforcement perspective to this review. One of the areas we looked at was staffing, and in that, we've made some minor adjustments to existing staff. But the real item that came out of this was just the identification of the lack of building coverage that we have after school. And it wasn't so much, I guess the enlightening thing to me is, it wasn't so much when we have an event in the school, because a lot of times we have, but on days when we simply have practices, we can have several hundred people in the building, and we have one maintenance person who's partially covering the building as well. So, one of the recommendations that'll be in the FY '17 budget would be to add an additional FTE. Now, before we present that budget, we'll look at other areas to try and figure out an offset so that our net increase might be zero. On the facility side, we've been talking a lot, and we did a tour earlier today, about the creation of a welcome center and the relocation of the security office and booster store. All of those things puts, we think, puts security where it needs to be, creates more security as people check into the building, and stops from having people walk through the building during the school day. And the reason I think that's important is, if it's your culture to see people that normally aren't in your building there every day, you don't question it. But there are a lot of schools out there that as soon as they see somebody, it's part of their culture that that's out of place. And that's really sort of where we want to get to. The, the school day should be a secure environment. Another area we looked at was technology. So, and again, this is a visible thing that people see as they visit East Campus. We've implemented what's called a Raptor system, which is a, where you have your driver's license swiped, and it does a background check against a law enforcement database. And then later this spring, not as visible, but will be visible internally to staff, is the rollout of what's called a Crisis Go app. And as we get into the questions later, Scott will talk about that. On the operational side, we talked a lot about the Community Swim program that we have, and we talked from the standpoint of, if people are supposed to swipe when they come in the building, that's not really practical for that program. They're not going to come to the front door and then walk down to the pool area and walk back out. So, we went through a number of processes. We talked about grandfathering the people using the program now, and as they stop using the program, the program would eventually go away. But the other thing we talked about was adjusting the hours a bit to coincide with the new school day, and that's where the committee landed at the present time, so that we could still offer the program. But because of the difficulty in securing that area of the building from other parts of the building, we want to end the open swim before the school day. Also, and this ties into that Raptor system, a very visible change that people will see is when they come to the building and have their license swiped, we would, like many places, hold on to the driver's license while they're in the building. And then as they check out of the building, the license would be returned. That way, staff has a pretty good handle, or a much better handle than we do now, of who's in the building at any given time. So, again, this was intended to be a very brief overview of what's in your packet. I think all the committee members are here, and so if there's any clarifications or questions you might have, depending on what that is, then a member of the committee may address it.
I just want to add one other thing. There's a tendency, when we talk about safety and security, to think that our building's going to be totally locked down and an unwelcoming place. And at the forefront of all of our conversations has been, how can we provide safety for everyone while creating a welcoming and enviroming, welcoming environment and space for everyone? And so, I just want to name that because it's really important for us to welcome everyone that comes in, to greet them, as well as have, provide them with what they need while they're in the building, and know who's in the building as well. And so, a lot of our work has been to talk about that, but also even in terms of our talks around changes to our facilities. How do we create spaces where people want to come here, where we can, where there's glass and where there's light and all of those type of things that make people feel comfortable and make the space exciting to come to? So, that's been a key part of our conversations as well.
Any comments, questions from the board?
I have one. I thought, first of all, that the rollout of notifying family and community about the Raptor system was really well done. I thought, I, I saw multiple, there were multiple touchpoints where I became aware of it. I haven't had the opportunity to come into the school since it was initiated. How has it gone? Has it been seamless? Have there been complaints? Has it worked relatively well?
Yeah. To answer that, Sally, it's been great. We, we haven't had any complaints on it. A lot of the emails I got after we sent that initial blast out about the changes that were going to happen were very positive. I probably got 15 emails from people, and, and I was, you know, a little nervous at first as well, but it was very well received, and still seems to be so.
Great. Thanks.
I have two questions. One, I'm just curious, how many people utilize the Community Swim currently? And my other question was, are, is this going to affect, which doors are open in the morning when students are coming to school? Are they all going to have to come in the front door now, or?
No. What we generally do is, at the start of the day, we, we open all the doors, because kids come from Noble, they, they're coming from Edgewood or, or off of Park. So, we want to get them in the building. I think that's the safest way. If we tried to funnel them through one entrance, especially in the front, it would be chaotic, especially since you probably have seen the traffic situation that's out there now. So, we open all the doors, and then as soon as the bell rings, that's when we go around and lock down all the doors.
We answered about the number of community-
Oh, the number, I'm, I'll be honest with you. I do, I do, you know that? Okay, great.
Hi. The number of community members on a daily basis before school is approximately six to 12 members. There are 36 annual memberships that currently are on our books, and there's about 75 community members that purchase 10-day passes. So, that's not a, not a regu, not as regularly used, though. But on average, the data that I saw is six to 12 people a day. And then they, and one last, an additional, starting at about 5:45 and 6 o'clock, are our students, whether on a, on a swim club or our actual teams that use, use the facility before school. And so, then the, the community members work in with those teams anywhere between from 7:30 to 9:30.
So, as somebody who used to swim for exercise and really intends to get back to it, I think it's, I hope that you can continue. I mean, it's a beautiful resource, and to make it available in some measure to the community, I think is something I hope we can continue to support.
Yeah. I think the committee agreed with that, that as long as we could do that before the school day, I think it's a wonderful time to get us swimming.
I think someone asked this question, Sally. Does this change the arrangement we had with the city in providing available swim time? Or, you know, I thought, I mean, I was just a disinterested community member when we built the new pool, but wasn't there, was there a financial arrangement with the city, or it's just, we're just nice people, we'll let people swim before school starts?
I received that question today, but I haven't had time to research that, because that, that predates when I came to the district, so I don't know. I'll have to look into that.
And just because we were there, it, maybe you left the door open. But what happened, when school closes, I mean, I know the door was open because we were all going there on a tour. Does that front door usually lock down at 3:50, or?
The greeters office closes at 3:30. The front door stays open, and what we try to do is, who's ever there, whether it's myself or another young man, Michael, is we will strategically lock down doors based on what's going on and what end of the building it's, it's going on, which, most of the time, there's stuff going on both ends and, and in the middle. So, it's, it's hard to, to lock down the front door because so many people come through there.
Yeah, but you're on the watch list. Just a quick comment, more than anything, I want to commend the committee for doing a great job. This isn't, you know, and I've, I've mentioned this several times over, over the past six months or so, as I got exposed to kind of our safety, our annual safety review last summer. And, and subsequent to the Raptor communication and a few other things, I've received some emails from some concerned citizens within the community, some are high school alum. And, and the comments are like, oh, you know, really, are we getting to that point where we've got to be so buttoned up and locked down and really so prescriptive, if you will, with, with how people come and go? And, you know, we've talked about this a lot as a board. You know, our, our little Norman Rockwell community here, or Mayberry RFD, whichever analogy you like best, still is a very unique, special place for all of us, and we, and we love the feeling. However, the reality of, of what we're looking at at 2016, and, and, gosh, I mean, Scott Craniac, you mentioned this months ago, that you don't have to look too hard, and there's most likely a school issue every single day in this country. And we're seeing them a little more frequently, and this isn't a sky is falling and, you know, we're trying to manage, you know, for worst, worst, worst-case scenarios, but we have to do something better than we're doing today. And I think the committee has kind of taken that seriously and, and put some real thought into it. And now, we as a group, we're going to learn a little more about it and ultimately try to make a decision. But Reese, to your comments this morning, or at the start of the meeting, you know, it's, if we think about our kids and we think about the safety of every single one of those students in that building, and their extended families that may be there from time to time, it's really important for us to know who's there, how often they show up, who's left, who hasn't left, and, and some of those elements. So, that's what we're trying to get our arms around. So, thanks for guiding us through this. It's, you know, it's, there's a, we got to eat the elephant one bite at a time, as they say, to make sure that we're really on the right track.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay. Are there any committee reports, education, finance, and ops?
We have not-
We have not met since the last meeting. I think March 30th is our next.
Mr. Powers, was there a finance?
We, finance and ops did not meet. Our next meeting is scheduled for, I think it's next week.
Okay.
So.
Blaison report. Mr. Mormon, is there anything to report on SS CD?
Good evening, thank you. Yeah, with the NS CD, we've been looking at how, you know, we are a consortium of 18 member districts. And it came up, and we've been trying to review how member districts, you know, withdraw or resign. And, you know, an issue came up where it suggested that we take it to a 24-month process, although the state of Illinois requires an 18-month process for a non-consensual. So, and I recommended that adding another six months for a consensual, and the difference being, if everybody's happy with a district leaving, and, you know, the first and primary concern is that students are well-served, and, you know, so it's always going to be a student-driven model. So, you know, it's something we have to look at, whether, you know, we stay with the 18-month model or the 24-month recommendation. Personally, I would keep it in line with the state model, which is 18 months for both. Having said that, then the next issue, we're looking at leasing a transition space for, you know, students in the transition mode, which are students who are basically being taught and learning how to survive on their own. And, you know, we're looking at leasing a facility. So we have to discuss that further. Then on a more exciting note, the NS CD is going to have their first 5K run walk. And that'll be Saturday, May 21st. So if anybody wants to go for walks in Highland Park to support NS CD, and you get a T-shirt. And it's going to be, hopefully, it's going to be a good program. So, and that's all I have at this point. Thanks.
In your packet is a recommendation for construction management services. It's a little intimidating. I think it's 28 or 30 pages long, and so I'd like to break that down a little bit. But just as an overview, as we looked at facility changes, we had some parameters. We worked within the existing footprint of the building, which contains cost. We also tried to structure something that would be within the existing revenue stream so that there would, we're not recommending a referendum to fund this. We're not recommending issuing operational debt. This would be out of existing funds as we move forward. A recommendation as to what to construct, because there are two segments to the project, as you saw earlier tonight, won't be made until April, after we get costs. But there's an enormous amount of work that goes in on the front end, in developing conceptual designs, and getting the project ready, and bidding, so that we actually know what the cost would be. Because everything up to this point is an estimate. Our architects draw up the blueprints in the model we utilize, which is a construction manager model. They then take those blueprints and break them into bid packages. And so the question I've been asked from multiple people has been, why would we hire a construction manager before we even know if we're going to move forward? And the short answer is because there's some pre-construction work that they get involved with. So rather than bring you two recommendations, one for pre-construction and one for construction when we move forward, we cover it with this contract. The same contract that we used in 2006, for the most part. Same contract we used in 2009. Same contract we used in 2013. We made some minor modifications just because of where we are timing-wise. We did that last week. But basically, in hiring a construction manager, what we would do is be renting people to run the project, and do the scheduling, and work with the trades. And for that, then we would be paying a management fee of 3%. There's a 1% insurance cost that goes along with that as well, and general conditions. So really, what we're asking tonight, by passing this, what we'd be on the hook for is about, and it's on the very last page in the memo here, $7,096, which would get us through the pre-construction phase. And then the remaining bit, so as we talked and walked through the building today, if we were not to do the alternate, and that affected the construction schedule, having worked with Pepper before, we'd make that adjustment, and there would be a slight credit there. Not a proportional credit, because there's still going to be the bulk of the work to be done. So I hope, I hope that makes some sense. What we're looking for tonight, like I said, the exposure on that, is the $7,096. That allows us to bid the project and then make an informed recommendation to you in April, so that you can make an informed decision. If you have questions on the contents of this, I'd be happy to try and answer it. And I also dragged Bill Bennett, who is with Pepper Construction, and who oversaw all our 2006 renovations, and our 2009 renovations, and the building of the track several years ago, is in the audience tonight as well. So, any questions?
Any comments, questions?
Yeah, I have a couple, please. Okay, so I'm going to do this very remedial, so I can understand myself. In past board meetings, we got approval to spend a handful of thousand bucks, I think it was eight, for architectural rendering, so that we could understand what we were looking at. The board then approved, a couple months ago, I believe, $68,000 to actually create construction plans. Is that accurate? Okay, and now we're going to be, I think the ask is, if I'm reading it correctly, $138,778.56 is the ask, to spend up to that amount. But if I also heard you correctly, if the board, after we get all the bids, the board believes this is way too expensive, the only thing we're really on the hook for, even though we've asked and potentially approved that amount, is the $7,000 and change. Is that correct?
If the board decided not to move forward with the project, it would be the pre-construction cost.
Okay, which is 68 hours, I believe, is it spelled out here, which is fairly straightforward in terms of organizing the bid packets, finding out how many different trades we need, what the staging is, and all that. What have we done, knowing that we have summer school going on at the same time? So how, you know, we're going to have kids coming in and out of the building with faculty, you know, for two sessions of summer school. I know we have a little experience at this, but what is that? Have we thought about that, and we know how to manage that from a health and safety standpoint?
We'll sit down, and it'll be with Pepper, it'll be with buildings and grounds, it'll be with security, it may be with the fire department, and we'll talk through those issues. We'll talk through and work with how to stage the project, what entrances to use, what entrances not to use, where we're going to relocate the office, how we move data lines, all those things get talked about. But you're right, we have experience doing that. And we have a working team. I mean, we have some, a lot of the same people from the referendum on the architect's side, on our side, and on the construction management side, that have worked well together in the past. So we have a high degree of confidence that we'll get that addressed. One thing I did leave out that I would like to mention, I just wanted to assure everyone, in your, in your security report, at the back of it is a page like this, it's the architect's estimate of this project. The things that we're talking about here right now are not in addition to, they're a component, they're already contained in there. It's just securing the services.
So what's before us, or will soon be before us, is a request to potentially spend up to $140,000, I'm rounding up. But this board has total authority to determine at a point in time in the future whether or not any of that spending, other than the $7,000 and change, actually gets invested or spent.
Yes, we don't know what the bidding market is right now, so as we go out, we don't know what our recommendation to you is going to be, whether it's to do a base bid, the base bid and the alternate, or nothing. But we'll know that as April comes. But that's, you know, from us having done this a number of times, I believe we're doing it the right way. We're investing a lot of time and energy now to get accurate costs, to build schedules, so we know exactly what we're dealing with.
Okay, so some of my friends that are at home that have sent me emails concerned about our spending, I hate to keep pounding on this, but I want to make sure I understand it more than anybody else. The only thing we are really agreeing to spend this evening is the $7,000 to do the rest of the bid packet, and the details that will further inform us on exactly how expensive this project may or may not be.
Correct.
Any other comments, questions?
I've gone back and forth a few times with Mr. Albus and Mr. Simic on this. I don't think until today I had a real understanding of the extent of the project until we walked through the space, and I read through all these materials. I'm a bit uncomfortable with the spoon-feeding of this approach. I understand the thoughtfulness, and the thoroughness, and the patience, and the process, but I'm a bit uncomfortable with committing to an amount for architectural drawings, an amount for, up to a certain amount for a construction manager, without knowing the extent of the project. So, and I know we can't talk about that as a board unless we're at this table. So I think Pepper is an excellent firm. I just don't know if their fee is reasonable, because I haven't seen any comparables to other construction managers. I know that's who we've always used, they've always done a great job, from what I've heard. But I have no way of comparing this up to $148,000 or $38,000 to anything else. So I'd like to hear from the other board. If all we're approving is $7,100 bucks, okay. I'm just, I'm still not quite comfortable with then next month, we're going to be possibly, you know, thrown a $1.1 million project that we're going to have to go up or down on in one meeting. So can we discuss it? I mean, we all had a tour, we all have some thoughts and feelings on, you know, phase one, phase two, tearing out the conference room. Is that something you all would like to share, just so we all know where we're coming from? Because we can't talk about this at Sunset or at the Health Club, so. Any thoughts?
Yeah, let me just kick it off, not that I've already used way more time than I've been given, but, you know, we are in a really unique position at Lake Forest High School in a whole host of ways. And I got to think and give credit to prior boards that have sat here, and some of you in the room were here when we had some pretty difficult times. And the board put a strategy in place for a path to black. Right? So we went from the turbulent years of 2007, '08, and '09, and put the right budgetary controls in place, spending controls in place. They had a strategy, they stuck to it. And we are the beneficiaries of that. And I would also highlight, we don't have to go too far in our community to see other school districts that don't have this same advantage. Advantage from the size of our budget, the advantage of the infrastructure that we have. There are several very popular, very good high schools not too far from here, who have significant infrastructure problems, because from a capital standpoint, they haven't maintained We've been blessed, because we've got a great collection of people, community members, past board members, current board members, staff, that have kind of really managed this on a regular basis. And Carol White deserves a lot of credit, because we've talked about her five-year capital plan for the three years I've been on the board, and what we can kick out to year six, what needs to be done immediately, you know, trying to balance the needs of the district. We are deciding how to spend and invest money. So part of our unique position is we have the money to spend. And the point, the point that I want to make sure people at home understand, because we have it doesn't mean we're playing drunken sailors and we're going to spend it. You know, there's been lots of conversation around what we should do or not do. And we want to make sure that, as a board, as we evaluate what may be before us next month or the month after, that it is, it is a need-to-have first. And then if we choose to venture into a nice-to-have, because we think that's part of a generational type spending, that you've heard me talk about, meaning if we decide to invest that money now, it's something that will benefit kids 25 years from now, because that space will sustain that level of value. So I, for one, have kind of pushed the different, you know, different parts of the scope, which are nice-to-have elements. So people that are concerned about that, you know where to send your emails, because I've kind of been thinking, hey, if we're in the space already, maybe we should do this, this, and this. So when you hear the group talk about phase one, phase two, or the base project versus the additional project, that's what we're talking about. It's the immediate safety plan that we think is important for obvious reasons. And then, well, heck, we're in there already, maybe we should do some other stuff, too. So know that we are not packaging this as, this is something that is 100%, we have to do or else kind of thing. So I would encourage community members to get involved, ask questions. There's a wealth of people to help answer those, provide you the information that you need. Because this is a big, I had heartburn when we did the Leading Edge Initiative, which was directly related to learning spending, right? So now here I am, you know, forcing spending that has nothing to really do about textbooks and notebooks for our kids, and the way that they learn and the way they teach, but spending taxpayer money nonetheless. So I want to make sure that we're addressing all the questions that people have, and we're doing it in a fair way, without trying to, you know, pay no attention to the man behind the curtain approach, and before you know it, we've spent all your money. That's, that's not what we're doing here. So hopefully, we can take the time while being expeditious with it, too, so we're not spoon-feeding people, and they, and they don't understand, you know, how did we end up here from where we were last July? Thanks.
I have the benefit of some perspective on this, because in each of the districts, I've been able to see a process that has been very thoughtful, and very steady, and a drip, drip, drip of information. But has also resulted in one project after the next, be it a variety of projects in '67 or in projects at 115, the sizable project of the track most recently, that there's a team of Pepper Construction and an architectural team that work really effectively with Mr. Albus and our team. One of the things that we really have to be mindful of is, when you have a good team, good teams get things done before school begins. And this is something that affects the front door of the flagship of the community, and a large section of the activity in there. And this, I have no reservations about the prudence of the project, the planning of the project, or the ability for these guys to execute this effectively, and importantly, within the timeframe that we need them to. So whether we wind up doing all the project or part of the project, I think there's a proven pattern of success that Mr. Albus and his team have demonstrated time. And again, thank you.
Look, I definitely appreciate the need to get high-quality stuff done, and having a good team that we've established a good working rapport with. But Alan, are there any other bids that we'll be reviewing again? Or is it, I mean, I know that you've told us some of these things in the past, would you- you remind me? Are we all in with our team now and that's it? Because I just want to make sure we're being as prudent as possible, both with the quality of work we do and also making sure that we've checked options.
When Reese and I had that conversation about spoon-feeding this, it made me go back and reflect. And, you know, when we did the project in '06, the magnitude of that, everybody's attention was on that. And then when we came back and renovated the instructional space here, it was very shortly after that we used the same process. When we did the track, we used the same process. But as we go and embark on this, this is the first time that we haven't had a board member that was around from '06 or '09 on the board. So that's kind of an aha to me that I should have stepped back and maybe outlined the process better. And I tried to do that in this memo here. On the front page, it lays out the steps that are involved. So what would happen going forward is if you approve this tonight, you've already approved the architect to develop construction drawings. So they, those drawings would be put into bid packages, advertised, bids would be solicited, brought in, there would be a scope review that's also done by Pepper Construction, and recommendations made based on who the lowest responsible bidders are. Then those bid recommendations would come to you, and they would be measured against these project estimates. I heard the architect say at an earlier meeting, they use that middle column, the medium. Everything I've done, I've used that high-end cost. And, you know, hopefully it falls more in the medium, but then based on where those numbers come in, we would make a recommendation to you. So to answer your question, there will be more packages that would come to you, they're all part of this, there's nothing outside of this. This encompasses the project. But they would come in April. In past projects, there have been times that we've asked the board to be flexible and there may be times we may need some assistance as far as maybe a meeting to approve a bid package if we get into a problem. And the board's always been accommodating with that. But we're trying to give you the entire project cost here. And again, this cost is embedded in that, this isn't an add-on to it. Does that, does that help?
That's what I would expect, that's good. Thank you.
And I'm not sure I can add anything other than to say that my own thought process in reviewing this particular request for tonight, I had that moment of, should we be looking at competitive bids solely for the project management piece of it? And I sort of had three factors that I considered. The first was, we have the history with Pepper, recent history, and I think we have a good working relationship. And I am mindful, to Mike's point, that if we want to hit the deadlines, if we want to work together smoothly, we know that they can deliver. The second thing was, I knew that John Power was running the finance committee and there was no way that the finance committee was saying, yeah, let's go ahead with this unless they had already vetted it. So to some degree, I was deferring to the recommendation coming out of the finance committee. And then the third is the fact that the Lions share, by a factor of something like 95%, will be competitively bid. And I was very mindful that we're on a tight timeline if we're going to do that this summer. And I thought that the balance of whether or not to slow this down for competitive bidding on what's a relatively small piece of the overall project wasn't worthwhile. So I'm comfortable for those reasons. I do think it raises a larger question of what's our threshold for competitive bidding. And as I'm still in my ramp-up phase, I still don't feel that I understand where those lines lie. I understand it can often be dictated by the source of the funding, but maybe that's something else that would be interesting to have a point of view from the finance committee on whether or not we have a threshold that we want.
But I think this production, or construction management architects fall under the professional services fees, so they're not required to be competitively bid, but I think it wouldn't hurt to get some competitive bids.
Actually, for clarity, the architects, you don't bid their services. Under the school code, you can do an architect selection process and you're not asking their price. So you go through a matrix and you evaluate and interview architects, and then you rank them, and then you sit down with the top-ranked one and you try to negotiate a price. And if you can't do that, then you go on to the second one. But it's not a bid like we typically would think of a bid. But Reese, you're absolutely correct. In 2005, I think there was an interview process done with a variety of construction management firms, that's before I came to the district, and Pepper was selected. You know, we have a very small site, really, by high school standards, and that presents all kinds of logistical problems. They know the site and they've performed and done a great job on it in the past. And this is a case where, you know, this isn't broke. I know, and we've talked, Reese and I have talked, and I can try and give information, all construction management firms on large scales, you might be in a 2.5% range, 3% is very typical, there are some there a little higher, but we're definitely within the market. In my opinion, we're not overpaying at all. And then when you factor in the history, it's just assurance that we're going to get a good project.
So sure, but without the proof, but we'll trust you on this. I was also a little blown away by the ranges of costs. And I'm a little concerned that whoever you said is going to try and focus on the middle, but you're going to focus on the high. Again, I know we're not building a house, but 2,200 square feet of base bid space, I mean, I don't have the price in front of me, but $500 or $600 without land, without a foundation, without a roof, without appliances, without things that you'd normally put in a lake bluff or a lake forest house, seems high. I don't think this is the Mercedes kind of project that we need. I think there are certain projects that require a higher level of architectural services and construction management services. I just don't think this is it. And I'm just talking about the base bid. That's just my opinion, I'm not a construction expert. This is basically walls and floors and ceilings. We're not touching the outside of the wall, we're not touching the roof, we're not even touching, I don't think, maybe a piece of the interior hallway. But I'm concerned that if we have these up-to costs and we start seeking bids from contractors that we're going to spend every bit of that, and I don't, I don't want to. Especially because, other than the moving the booster store and the welcome center and security area, we're not improving instructional space. And there are some needs, we've all walked to high school, there are some needs to improve instructional space in that school. And those offices are a bit dated, but it's not instructional space. And I'm, I think it falls, for me, it falls under the nice-to-do, but not necessary at this time. It's great that we have the money to be able to do it without bonding or raising taxes, but that's my opinion and I...
If I don't ask him a question, he's going to be very upset that I asked him to come to the meeting.
Yeah, you made him come on a...
Made him come here.
Yeah.
So Bill, I don't know, and because we're on tape, you'd have to go to the podium, but the architect's estimate on, basically, the offices ranges from $135 a square foot on the low end to $185 on the high end. So my question to you, would you be comfortable responding to a cost estimate like that? On toilet areas, it ranges from 2 1/4 to 275.
On the bottom, design contingencies, construction management, architects' fees, other contingencies, I mean, that jacks your costs up 50%. So your 175 or 275 a square foot goes up.
Do I push this?
Do I?
No, okay. Hi, I'm Bill Bennett, I'm with Pepper. Thanks for having me here tonight. Yeah, the range of costs that Perkins and Will provides are healthy. Certainly, the high end is a higher-end cost and they don't, they wouldn't be drawing anything that expensive, so I would not see or expect that those all to be on the high end. I will say, though, that as Ben mentioned by the board, excuse me, to implement a summer program here while awarding bids in April presents some challenges because the bidding market right now has a lot of folks that have already filled out their summer schedules. And so that is one of the services that we provide for is to make sure that we're getting quality contractors to respond to your project, to make sure that you get the best value for the scope. And so from that, I would say that, you know, the mid-range is where I would see those, where I would expect those costs to come in. Because to your point, we're not doing major renovations to the mechanical air conditioning and heating systems. There is a little bit, obviously, that is kind of the center core of the building, so there are some things that you don't see, you know, in terms of the communications, technology cabling, the security headends, and those types of things that are included in that scope. But overall, I think that the costs that Perkins and Will presented, and we did go over those when, what was that, back in November or December, or early January, when I saw those costs, and I said, those are fine to be using at this stage when you really just have a couple of, you know, colored pictures to assess value on.
That we're going to spend, I know you're not a betting man, but you'd think we're probably going to fall in that mid-range.
Yeah, you will not get to the high end of that. Yep.
Yeah, and just one point of clarification, Alan, correct me if I'm wrong, the high end that Alan referred to is what we put in the budget projections over our five-year spending. So when you see our fund balance drop from 18.3% down to 11 over a five-year period of time, that includes the high bid packet numbers. So if we're going to come in at the mid-range potentially, and who knows, obviously, that fund balance wouldn't be spent down as dramatically as it may be identified now. And the reason we did that, as you know, Reese, is because we have an obligation to stay above 10%. So we weren't even going to start talking about this if it would have encroached upon that 10% range. You know, one might argue 11% is encroaching upon 10, I get it. But that's the purpose of figuring out exactly where we're going to be next month, depending on the bid packets and what we get back.
Oh, thank you for commenting on that, John, because that was one of my concerns. This is a big drop in our fund balance and projected with, and I didn't appreciate that that was based on the higher estimate, so that's good to know. But I'm just curious, you know, we, this proposal is being presented as a security, enhanced security project. And I'm sort of curious because I, you know, there's a lot in the design, and unfortunately, I wasn't able to do the walkthrough before this, but what proportion of this project is truly related to security versus some of these other nice wishlist sorts of things?
Well, you know, actually, I'd like to address that because to Mr. Markison's, no, that's to Mr. Markison's point, I'm in total agreement. Really, we're doing a security suite enhancement, which causes us to move the admin suite. And I'm in agreement, most of this is not education-driven enhancements for the kids because you go up on the third floor, I'd like to spend a lot more money up there fixing kid space before we start enhancing administrative space. And really, I looked at it in my, I came, you know, my thought was, it's a million-dollar solution to a $100,000 problem. And really, I'm all for the booster store, moving it. That should, you know, you could do that for $50,000. The security suite, you could do that, I would think, for $100,000. Moving the admin section, you know, which I figured at 850 square feet, by doing that, you're talking another couple hundred thousand. So, but until we get the numbers that, you know, from the bid packages, you know, I think we just got to sit back, wait and see. But as far as a million-dollar project, I'd have to say no way. And, you know, I'd like to see the bid packages come back. And as far as doing the other sections, there's no need at this point. We have much more compelling things to fix. Like I said, go up to the third floor and see some of those classrooms that are hideous, you know, before we start really enhancing the admin suite. That's all I got to say.
But, you know, Ted, I think you bring up a good point, and we've had some conversations on this. Let me just be very clear. This was never proposed to be an educational enhancement. So we've talked about improving educational space, that's not the scope of this project, right? So you and I have talked about this multiple times.
Correct.
You may choose to want to spend dollars in an educational enhancement way, which I think is awesome, but that's a different conversation at a different time. So that isn't this discussion.
Right, this is being pushed as a security enhancement. It's not a million-dollar security issue.
Hold on, let me walk you through that again. I think, I've been very clear, but perhaps I haven't. The original scope, which is the baseline project that you see, was everything related to the potential security enhancements. And one thing created a cascade of another, right? So we bring, you know, we bring the security office up from the basement, which everybody unanimously said several months ago, oh yeah, we got to do that. Okay, so we need a space for them. Well, they're going in Dr. Holland's office, which means she moves over to a different area. We decided to increase the welcome area for that scope to be a little different, so there's some work to be done there. And then one of the biggest security concerns we have is when people visit the Booster Club store in the basement, we don't know where they go after they go to the store. So that was tied into the safety scope, if you will, or security scope. The rest of it, I pushed. I think I've been very vocal on that. My logic was, the construction people are in the building, should we do more? And if we did more, what would it cost? I have sticker shock and heartburn over $1.2 million, just like the rest of you. If the consensus this evening is blow off the nice-to-have portion, and then we can still debate what portion of the safety element is need versus want, that's a very fair conversation. But it boils down to opportunity costs and how we collectively decide to invest the dollars for capital improvements of any sort. And then secondarily, what do we want to define as safety-oriented? Because I agree with most of you that that's a little fluffy right now. Okay, is that really safety or is it not safety? So, you know, at the risk of sounding defensive, and Ted, I apologize if I'm coming across that way, this has evolved over about six months in different forms and fashion, and I want to make sure, particularly to the people at home, that we aren't painting this whole thing as, oh, we have to spend $1.2 million because we have a big safety concern, right? A portion of this is related to safety, the other portion is just trying to be, you know, a little more prudent with dollars that essentially are a one-time expenditure and how much value can we get out of those dollars over time? And that's ultimately the question that we're going to have to answer.
At least his question, what is the range of the base bid? Just as we walk through it today. So, I mean, let's ignore John's question about, or point about that the definition of security might be a little fluffy right now, but the base bid range, including all those contingencies and construction management fees?
Well, the whole project estimate is on the last page of your security report, so you can look at the numbers there and you can back out because the alternate space is segregated out. So you can look at the numbers, it would be on the low end, I'll just do the middle, $1,057,602 minus 265,944, so roughly about $800,000.
But it'd be a little less than that because some of your fees are percentages, so it'd be less than that.
Little more than half is the base bid? Is that? A little more than half?
Seven, eight hundred thousand, so.
Okay.
And I think the big thing tonight is that we don't get ahead of ourselves. I think we need to see the construction bid packages because really, until we have that, we really don't know what we're talking about. So I'd say, you know...
And at that time is when we should have the real strong discussion about doing the Phase One and Phase Two or just Phase One. I mean, the reality is that I think it's going to be unlikely we're going to do I mean, the reality is that I think it's going to be unlikely we're going to do Phase Two now, right? And let's see, let's see the base bids come out, and that'll certainly galvanize us a little more at that time.
Yeah, that's way, until we know what the numbers we're even talking about, I'd say I'm all in favor of approving the, going ahead to get the, you know, construction bid packages out, so that, you know, we know what we're talking about. Until we have that, you know, we're just, you know, speculating.
Yes, I said it earlier, this whole process has been set up so that we can make an informed recommendation to you, so that you can make an informed decision, and that's the path we're on.
I had one other quick question. The percentage that this contract proposes to pay Pepper, is that the same as you paid in '06 percentage-wise?
No, the same we paid in '09 and in '13, because of the scale of work. In '06 is a little less, which is typical when you have a larger scale, and same on the architect's side, that goes down a little bit as well, and that's very common.
Okay. So is our motion really just to approve construction management services up to $7,100? Or do we need to approve the whole proposal?
If you approve this, and if you decide to go ahead with construction, then this contract's in place, and it would kick in. So the fee would be based on whatever that construction amount is. We would adjust staffing based on whatever we would need to do, and we wouldn't have to come back to you with another recommendation. That's why we packaged it this way. If we, the prices come in very high, or you decide you don't want to proceed with construction, then we would have the exposure of the $7,000 through the bid process, and that would be the end of it.
Everybody understand that?
Yeah, and I would recommend that we just take the $7,100 risk and not proceed further until we see the numbers on the, you know, the potential expense.
So may I have a motion to approve the construction management services proposal as presented and described by Mr. Albus?
Sure. I, yeah. I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the construction management services proposal.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Mr. Murman?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Marcusson?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Stuff next, the 2016-2017 board meeting dates. First meeting of the new school year is on September 6th, it's a Tuesday, the only one that's on a Tuesday, I assume that's because of Labor Day, right? And then every other day is on a Monday, although somebody, I can't remember who questioned the October date.
It was me.
It was Diane, yeah, Mrs. Kryling, because the October meeting is so close to the November meeting. But if we move it to the first week, why can't it be the second week, Eileen?
We have Columbus Day, and we have Yom Kippur that week. The previous week, we have Rosh Hashanah on the Monday. We could do it on the 4th if you chose that Tuesday, but I think most people have rather do it on Mondays, that's why I put it. But we can change it to whatever you would rather. We can do it either on the 4th, or we can leave it on the third week, as we have it now on the 17th.
Earl, you want to leave it?
Well, I just liked it being a little bit more spread out between meetings, because it seems like we always have lots to talk about.
So everybody would like to move it to Tuesday, the 4th? Does that work for everybody?
Probably a good point. We've never canceled a meeting, what if, we can't cancel a meeting, we have to meet once a month?
Due to bad weather.
Okay.
Due to bad weather in the past.
It rains a lot.
Anticipate some bad weather.
I think we need snow.
Or due to July.
I think we need a couple of feet of snow.
Okay, so a motion to approve the 2016-2017 board meeting calendar as presented with the change of the October 17th meeting to Tuesday, October 4th.
Okay, before we do that, just one other, when is spring break for the high school? Because I was trying to figure that out.
It's not in October.
No, but I mean, if we're looking at the calendar for the whole year.
I asked for a motion, but we didn't get one. Please, Mrs. Dr. Elliott?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the 2016-17 board meeting dates with the one amendment discussed for October.
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Marcusson?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Murman?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Murman?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Marcusson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, there's some additional policies, approval of policy 2:150. It's a policy about some changes to committee descriptions, this is the first reading. I know Mr. Powers and Dr. Elliott, you made some suggested changes, but I was advised, told that those have to go through policy first, that we should not discuss those, what I would consider minor descriptive changes to the policy, to the committee meetings at the board meeting, so we'll present those to Mr. Murman's policy committee. So may I have a motion? Well, first, we're tabling the reading of policy 2:150 committees to the April meeting.
I move that the Lake Forest High School Community District 115 Board of Education table policy 2:150, first reading, till further review.
In April. Second?
Second.
A roll call vote, please?
Mr. Murman?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Mr. Marcusson?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Another policy change, this is approval of policy 2:110, qualifications, term, and duties of board officers. This is the first reading. May I have a motion to approve the first reading of policy 2:110, qualifications, terms, and duties of board officers?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve policy 2:110, first reading.
Second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Mr. Murman?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Marcusson?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item is, I'd call a technical policy change that allows Mr. Simic to accept resignations. Is that a good way to explain the policy? May I have a motion to approve the first reading of policy 5:210, resignations?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve policy 5:210, first reading.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Murman?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Marcusson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is approval of policy 7:270 about the administering of medicines to students, first reading. May I have a motion to approve the first reading of policy 7:270, administering medicines to students?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve policy 7:270, first reading.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please?
Mr. Marcusson?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Mr. Murman?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, you all have had a chance to review the human resources report. Any discussion, comments, questions, any of the items? May I have a motion to approve the human resources report as presented?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the human resources report as presented.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please?
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Marcusson?
Aye.
Mr. Murman?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Mr. Murman?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Marcusson?
Aye.
Mr. Murman?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we have some items on the consent agenda, and I'd like to remind the board that any item can be removed from the consent agenda, and we can discuss it or approve it separately. So may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, the approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements for February 2016, the approval of the release of executive session minutes July 2015 through January 2016, the minutes of a regular meeting dated February 8, 2016, the minutes of an exec session dated February 8, 2016, the disposal of audio recordings dated September 10, 2014. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second. Roll call vote, please?
Mr. Murman?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Marcusson?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have a couple of FOIA requests, Mr. Powers' favorite part of the meeting, from a commercial FOIA request from Smart Procure, and a FOIA request from Jennifer Neubauer, resident. A few announcements, Thursday, March 10, 2016, is the orchestra concert, great event. I've been to that a couple times, at 7:30 PM at the RMA. Monday, March 14, is the band concert, also at RMA. Wednesday, March 16, is a late start day, 9:30 AM. Wednesday, March 16, is also the choral concert, so the kids could sleep in, that's at 7:30 PM. Monday, March 22, summer school online registration begins, and spring break starts at the end of the school day on March 18, and school reopens on Tuesday, March 29. They get the Monday off because it's the day after Easter. And then on Thursday, April 7, is the percussion festival. Is that new? We always had a percussion festival? I don't remember hearing about that. Every year we have it? Okay, missed that. And then next month, we're back here on Monday, April 11, for our Board of Education meeting at 6:30 in this same room. So 8:00 PM on the dot. May I have a motion to adjourn the Lake Forest Community High School board meeting?
Still moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Voice vote, please, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.[1759.61]